Second.
We have the motion and the second to approve the consent agenda, any discussion? Hearing done will vote. Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Mrs. Stuckert?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. We'll go to the non timetable agenda. First item we have there is to hear the financial report through August. Mrs. Johnson?
Good evening, Mr. President Commissioners. I'll highlight a few items from the financial report through August. We'll begin with the general fund report. With 67 percent of the year completed, our property taxes equal $3.2 million and were 98 percent collected compared to budget. Our other taxes and fees, which include financial institution tax and franchise fees, is 83 percent collected compared to budget. Our intergovernmentals include revenues such as the highway distribution tax and oil production tax and is 65 percent collected compared to budget. Our licenses fees and services, which includes building permit revenue and oil royalties, is 80 percent collected compared to budget. Our building permit revenue is up $413,000 over last year. This category also includes municipal court fines, which are $142,000 more than last year. Our sales of city lots and equipment totals over $1 million through August. And our total general fund revenues equal $8.2 million and were 73 percent collected compared to budget. Our general fund expenses in our general government, which includes administration, court, finance, and buildings and grounds, is 75 percent expended compared to budget. Our public safety, which includes police and fire, is 66 percent expended compared to budget. Our engineering and streets is 65 percent expended compared to budget. And our cultural services, which includes the museum and forestry, is 50 percent expended compared to budget. Our total general fund expenses equal $7.4 million through August and were 64 percent expended compared to budget. In our enterprise funds, our water wastewater revenues equal $6.7 million through August and were 105 percent collected compared to budget and 63 percent more than last year. The increase in revenue is due mostly to bulk water sales. Our expenses and capital outlays total $5.7 million, which is 107 percent expended compared to budget. Most of this is due to the wastewater treatment plant, which will be moved to our building construction fund. In our solid waste fund, our revenues total $2.3 million through August, which is 81 percent collected compared to budget and 24 percent more than last year. And our expenses and capital outlays total $1.8 million, which is 67 percent expended compared to budget. In our sales tax reports, in our 1 percent sales tax fund, we received $618,000 of revenue in August, which is up 54 percent for the year. Our 1 percent sales tax fund is broken down into groups. The first is the 50 percent share, which transfers 50 percent of the total revenue received to the street projects fund. This transfer will occur at year end. The transfer in 2012 is budgeted to be $2.6 million. The second is our 20 percent share, which is for job creation and senior programs. This segment funds Stark Development, elder care, and RSVP subsidies, along with the senior citizen and Southwest Regional Grant programs. And the third segment is the 30 percent share, which is set aside for capital improvements. The expenses here include part of the BAC pledge payment. In our half percent sales tax, we received $309,000 of revenue in August, which is also up 54 percent for the year. Our expenses include payment for the West River Community Center bond. In our hospitality tax, we received $120,000 of revenue in August, which is up 48 percent over last year. Our expenses include $1 million for the Badlands Activity Center pledge payment and $155,000 paid to the airport and Parks and Rec for their one-time subsidies. The occupancy tax shows revenues total $110,000 in August, which is up 93 percent over last year. Our expenses include $219,000 paid to the CVB for their subsidy and $60,000 for the special events grant. In our street projects report, we received $87,000 in revenues and we've expended $1.1 million towards those projects through August. And in our development impact fee program, the program has a balance of $387,000 available for commitment at the end of August. Those are some of the highlights. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mrs. Johnson. Are there any comments or questions regarding the August financial report?
I have one question. Maybe going to put you on the spot here, Mrs. Johnson, but looking at these sales tax numbers, can you remind us how we handled that with the 2013 budget? Where are we with respect to the '12 budget?
We expected a 35 percent increase by the end of the year. We are above that right now, but that's where we expected to end. And then we added 10 percent for 2013 to that 35 percent increase number, if that makes sense. We didn't show a 54 percent increase that we're showing now. We assumed it would end up to be about 35 percent.
Okay. Thank you.
Other questions? If there's no other questions or comments, would there be a motion to approve the report?
I'll make a motion to approve the financial report.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have the motion, the second, any discussion. Hearing done then will vote. Mrs. Stuckert?
Aye.
Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. Okay. We'll go to item B then. This is financial support of the Theodore Roosevelt Regional Airport. There is a loan agreement. And Mr. Coleen, I think, is presenting this item.
Yes, Mr. President Commissioners, the proposed loan modification agreement in your packets is a modification of an existing loan with the Dickinson Airport Authority. This loan agreement would increase the amount available to the airport authority to $1.1 million. The airport authority would repay the loan at a 4 percent interest rate over 60 months. It's my understanding the airport authority intends to use the proceeds of the loan in order to improve their parking facilities at the airport. Be happy to entertain any questions you might have.
Thank you, Mr. Coleen. Any comments or questions? I think the airport manager was here one or two meetings ago and made a pretty thorough presentation regarding their finances and this parking project. Mr. Kessel?
President Johnson, the airport manager did indicate that he is likely to be present at the meeting, so there may be an opportunity, if there's questions for him, to ask him if he does show a little later in the meeting.
Anybody have a problem acting on this loan agreement at this time? Would there be a motion either to approve or disapprove the agreement?
Mr. President?
Mr. Steiner?
Move to approve the loan agreement with the Theodore Roosevelt Regional Airport?
Second it.
We have the motion and the second, any discussion. Hearing done will vote. Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Mrs. Stuckert?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. We'll go to item C, and this is a joint powers agreement with Grand Forks for doing our plan reviews. And Mr. Coleen is also introducing this item.
Thank you, Mr. President Commissioners. This proposed agreement is a joint powers agreement between the City of Dickinson and the City of Grand Forks. This agreement would provide for the City of Grand Forks to supply some services regarding a building plan review for Dickinson. Over the past several months, we have met with officials from, staff officials from the City of Grand Forks in order to craft this agreement. And it does allow for payment from the City to Grand Forks in order to provide those services for Dickinson. This agreement just establishes the roles and responsibilities for each of our cities, and city staff would recommend approval.
Thank you, Mr. Coleen. You've heard his introduction. Any comments or questions?
President Johnson, if I may?
Mr. Kessel?
The City of Grand Forks has approved this agreement contingent upon approval of their city attorney. They did that so that there would be some little room for flexibility, knowing that we hadn't approved this document yet. I think we are at final form, but in case there is, you know, a slight item that needs to be revised, nothing of substance, maybe we could do something similar so that, just to make sure once they get the agreement again. We don't believe that there'll be any changes, but if you would consider at least approving it contingent upon a review, a final review by our council.
Okay. Would the commission member care to move that motion?
I'll make the motion.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
We have the motion and the second, further discussion. Have, Mr. Crotan, have we actually sent them some plans to see, you know, on a trial basis, see how this works?
Mr. President, yes, we have. We submitted plans two weeks ago. We should be getting back the final comments with respect to that, and we're in the process of potentially sending two additional ones as well. So the, I think that the process will work out well. Right now, we're sending complete sets FedExed. Very soon, I would hope to send electronic versions in order to expedite that process and also alleviate the cost of sending, sending them by paper as well. So we'll be working on that in the future.
How far behind do you think we are on plan approvals right now?
Residential, which would be single-family and duplexes, we're about a week or two. Just depends on how many come in. Sometimes we get 10, 15 permits a day. And then it comes into the commercial, industrial, and the larger multifamily projects. We're, at this point, probably about three to four weeks for that. Of course, that's all contingent upon, you know, completeness of plans and our reviews. We've had problems of getting civils and confirming those issues, so, you know, if everything is there, I would anticipate our process, and I'm going to, we're shooting for a process, about three to four weeks. I think that's a very realistic timeframe that we could do. We've started a new program where we have require four sets of commercial building plans, a very complete checklist, and if they submit all those, then I think that time period would be reflective of our turnaround.
And with the help of Grand Forks, how long do you think it might take before we're back to a more normal turnaround period in plan review, you know, assuming you get complete submittals to you?
You know, I'm looking at, you know, and I guess everybody has different expectations. I personally feel that for apartments or larger residential projects in commercial and industrial, a three to four week turnaround is acceptable when it comes into, you know, those particular projects, because you have a lot of reviews that you need to do, and there's coordination with staff. If that's not the expectation of the commission, we could look at, you know, different ways to try to do that, but I think a three to four week turnaround is very, is, you know, I think a very realistic turnaround, one that works. Been in other communities, that seems to be an acceptable turnaround period. For residential, we would like to get them down to about a week, and I think that's very, that's very realistic. We had that timeframe for a good part of the summer, but it just depends on how fast they come in. You know, if we get 10 or 15 permits for a subdivision all in one time, sure that's going to slow that down, but we'll catch up with that lag. So that's, that's the timeframe that we are looking at trying to achieve, and I think that's very realistic.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I have a quick, this is with Grand Forks is just commercial, right?
Commissioner Stuckert, they're looking at projects basically would be fourplexes and above. Our standards that we apply for a lot of civils, a lot of additional engineering apply to, to projects that are three or more, because then you start to deal with additional fire codes, building code standards as well. But for the most part, the smaller ones we'll keep in-house unless we get behind, so they'll probably be doing, to answer your question, bigger apartments in commercial and some industrial. But we're going to still do reviews in-house so that we don't lose that edge for us to do our reviews.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Okay. Would there be a motion regarding this agreement?
So move.
Second.
We have the motion to approve and the second, any discussion? Hearing done, we'll vote.
I thought you already had the motion.
Did we do it once already?
Yeah.
I think you did.
Oh.
I'll double it.
I'll withdraw my second.
Dean moved and, was it Carson or?
Who moved it?
He.
Oh. Okay. You made quite an impression on me, Commissioner Jackson. Okay. All right. So we'll go ahead and vote. We have the motion and the second, twice. Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mrs. Stuckert?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. Item D. Mr. Kessel, you'll introduce this item. This is a letter of support.
Thank you, President Johnson. Mr. Gary Stinson of MDI Limited Partnership has requested a letter of support. He is the current part owner of four different properties, low-income housing properties in the City of Dickinson, affordable housing properties, I should say. He is increasing his ownership percentage and transferring these to a new limited partnership. Because each of these projects have had federal dollars with city support in the past, this letter of support is a requirement to move forward with the ownership change. It does not require the city to put up any, any funds or do anything further. It's simply saying that we're okay with this transfer of ownership to a new LLC.
So the motion would be to approve the letter of support. Is there such, such a
I'll move.
Chair, a second? We have the motion and the second, any discussion? Hearing done will vote. Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mrs. Stuckert?
Aye.
Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. That takes us to item E, which are reports. Mr. Kessel?
Thank you, President Johnson. Commissioners, the first item I'd like to talk about tonight is the Vision West program. This is a planning effort that is undergoing in western North Dakota. It is affecting 17 different oil-producing counties, and they are putting together local plans. And Stark County will have their planning week Wednesday, October 26th, 7th, and 8th. It starts on Wednesday with a convening of a steering committee at the Strom Center, and later in the day, there'll be a public meeting held at the Richardson High School. All the members of Richardson are invited to attend so that they can provide input into a plan that will be very specific to the community of Richardson. On Thursday, there'll be another public meeting in Bellfield to address issues in a planning effort in Bellfield. That'll be at 4:00 at Bellfield City Hall. And then later that evening at 7:00 PM at the South Heart City Hall, they'll have a similar type meeting. After all those public meetings are held, the steering committee will reconvene on Friday at the Strom Center and put together the Stark County Initiative, which is just a collection of the three communities that are involved. The City of Dickinson is not partaking in this events because we are undergoing a comprehensive planning process with KLJ, so the focus will be on the smaller communities in Stark County. Just wanted to make sure that the City of Commission was, was up to date. We, that steering committee will be made up of regional representatives, and if there is a member of the City Commission who is interested in being on that committee, I would certainly love to hear that volunteer and attend that, those two steering committees on Wednesday and Friday. The other item that I have is just an employee housing update. The commission authorized the purchase of six FEMA trailers and the, the ownership of two homes just north of City Hall, so we have eight units. Currently, four of those FEMA trailers are occupied, and both of those homes are occupied. We have eight openings in various positions that will be closing soon. In fact, two offers were made today for just two open dispatch positions. We may fill up the remaining FEMA trailers with those two positions. We'll have to see. But I just wanted to give you as a commission the update that those are being utilized to a, to a great extent, and we expect them to be fully occupied by the end of this round of hiring process. So it's been a good investment. And that would conclude my reports unless there's questions.
Are there any comments or questions for the city administrator? All right. Hearing done, we'll move on. Public safety, Chief Seavock will give us a report on the fire department.
President Johnson, Commissioners, tonight will present the August report for you. August incident response, 35. We're tracking right around 30 to 35, 38 every month, compares to 27 in 2011 and 30 in 2010. And again, year-to-date, January 1 through August 31 of 2012, we're 40 percent over 2011 and 72 percent over 2010. An increase that I am pleased to show you is in our routine inspections. 82 routine inspections conducted in the month of August, 40 follow-ups, nine construction, five childcare, 16 miscellaneous, four lectures and demos. The increase you see in the routine inspections is a direct and positive result of us hiring the fire inspector that you authorized for a mid-year hire in 2012. And again, that's the results, the positive results we see from that, and thank you for us adding that staff person and allowing that mid-year hire. We're looking for great things to continue along those lines. We were able to fill that position internally. Todd O'Donnell was our full-time firefighter. We were able to move him into the fire inspectors position, and we'll be interviewing six candidates tomorrow for the firefighter's position that Todd vacated. July activities saw us play host one day to Pink Fire Trucks, the Pink Heels of North Dakota, Pink Heels Tour of North Dakota. Nationwide, the American Fire Service embraces and supports things like the Pink Tour, which is awareness and support of breast cancer. This truck spent a morning in Dickinson. The truck's name is Vivian, and that's quite a story behind how it was named for a cancer survivor. It's adorned with signatures from families and survivors from all across the state. There were many people that stopped at the central station. They gave a very young child a ride in the truck, and they gave rides to other citizens that stopped. It was over at City Hall for a while, and we were glad that we were able to be a part of that. It was a real quick, kind of almost an unannounced visit, but we were glad to make room for him and to support him, at least for the morning. And the, the public really, really catches their eye, and anybody that's ever had to deal with cancer in their families or personally, it means a lot to them to see the, the impact on people that came up to that truck to sign it or to read the signatures was really something. We also were at the Dickinson State University teaching the resident assistance, fire and life safety, and fire extinguishers. Trained 20 students there. And Fire Prevention Specialist Deb Barrows and myself met with the new Vice President of Student Affairs, Patty Carr, to go over their emergency response plan as it deals with the fire department and fire response. By and that I mentioned, we hired our new fire inspector, Todd O'Donnell. Country House also saw us there with the fire extinguisher demonstration and training for 20 of their staff. In our regular training, we used our live fire props and practice foam application, and the pictures you see fading in there are just pictures taken that night of the Special operations training was rope rescue, lowering a rescuer to a victim either in a confined space or on the side of a structure. And of course, the Battle of the Badges took place, which I'm sure we'll be hearing more about as tallies are made known and so on. Rumor has it that Team Fire did win again this year, and I do have to admit, however, that we lost all of the, the other activities such as the car race and the minute to win And in addition, the letter that I provided to you as part of the report, I mentioned we're currently contacting area businesses in an attempt to raise money to purchase additional needed equipment, rescue equipment for auto extrication and trench and technical rescue. Again, as mentioned in my report, the fundraising efforts of our volunteers and the generosity of our community have provided us with many useful training props and equipment on several of our apparatus, and I'm pleased to announce that we received a donation from Sunwell Services. Dickinson Volunteer Fire Department received a donation from Sunwell Services for $2,000 that we will be using to order the necessary rescue equipment we're still waiting for. We also received an unsolicited donation from Oxy for $3,000. And our members, members of the volunteer fire department voted unanimously to buy new CPR mannequins for the city fire department with that money. And those mannequins are also used in the training of first aid and CPR to the rest of the city departments. And also, for the past several years, the Dickinson Fire Department has partnered with the Senior Citizens Center to provide a breakfast over the Fourth of July. And after expenses are paid, usually, not usually, except for one time, after expenses are paid, we return that money to them because we've had other fundraising efforts become available to us. And this year, I'm pleased to announce that we were able to present $900 to the Sunset Senior Citizens Center from the proceeds of that breakfast. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Chief Seavock. Any comments or questions for the chief?
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. We'll try squeeze in the Police Department report, and presenting today will be Captain Siani. So, welcome, Captain.
Mr. President Commissioners, I will try to move along as quickly as possible for your benefit, of course. Twenty, um, four August accidents. We had 81 total accidents. The police firm took care of, of those 81 accidents, 65 were property accidents, two were injury accidents, and 14 were hit-and-run involved. 488 traffic stops for August. Of that 488 traffic stops, there were 311 citations issued and 161 warnings. The arrests you'll see for July and August were actually slightly down from last year. I don't know how, what caused that, except for proactive police work is all I can come up with for that, so. As you can see, in August, there were 106 criminal arrests, and these arrests range from, could be a DUI or aggravated assault, ranged in that range. Calls for service were down as well. Comparison to last year at this time, there were 207, 2,007 calls for service as compared to 2011, 2,147 calls. But overall, for the year, you can see there are 17,261 calls compared to 15,000 just over last year. Head number officers in training, 18 total. Eight officers went to Jamestown, excuse me, Jamestown Convention, the North Dakota Peace Officers Association. At that, they attended some training. There were some events, some shooting events, some other activities for officers, some post-certified training they attended. Three officers went to ICS 300 and 400, which is Incident Command. That was held locally. That's actually a three-day training. Sniper craft, one officer went to Grand Forks and attended sniper training for the Southwest Tactical Team. That was an intensive 40-hour training. And Sergeant Klausert put on use-of-force training, donned the red man suit for eight hours, knocked our officers around, come up with some bumps, bruises, chipped teeth, but we learned, get some mouth guards and some other protective equipment, but it's force-on-force training. I guess that's pretty much concludes my report.
Thank you, Captain. Are there any questions for the captain? Comments? All right. Good job. Thank you. This time, it's 5:00. We do have some timetable agenda items. The first being our 2013 public hearing for the budget, so at this time, we'll declare the public hearing So at this time, we'll declare the public hearing open. If anybody would like to comment on the 2013 budget, you may do so now. Just step to the podium, state your name, and we'll hear your comments. Anybody wish to comment on the budget? There's no one that wishes to comment, so we'll declare the public hearing closed. Mrs. Johnson, I will ask one question. Have there been any changes to the budget since first reading? Okay, no changes. All right. Thank you. Well, we're going to go down to Tab 6, Public Works and Planning, and Mr. Cottan will probably get one item through before we'll have to go back to the timetable agenda, but we'll let you do the first item.
President Johnson, if I may, on the last item, we didn't receive any written comments either.
Okay.
I just thought it was worth mentioning.
Thank you.
Mr. President, commission, the first item we have under Public Works and Planning, this is a rezone petition from Ag, the planning and development, for property immediately to the south of the existing Lyons Second Plat and the existing PUD that was established a month or so ago. The property is located to the east of Fourth Avenue East. The overall project size is 33 single-family residents, 76 townhouses, and 204 multifamily dwellings. City staff and planning commission recommend approval, contingent upon five recommended conditions, and those are attached within your packet materials. There are no changes from the first reading. I have noticed, though, in the ordinance, under Section 1, Subset 1, it references as part of the legal description that this is all part of Lyons Second subdivision. It actually should read all of Lyons Third. So I just want to make an amendment to that, just to include the third subdivision for accuracy. And with that, city staff recommends approval.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Cottan. Mr. Coling, are you in agreement with his change here?
I will confess, Mr. Cottan knows this better than I do of the property where it's located, so I would defer to Mr. Cottan.
So that line should read all of Lyons Second subdivision plus or and, or how did you say that again?
Mr. President, it should just include Lyons Third. What this is, is the PUD, we're amending the existing PUD, which is part of Lyons Second. And instead of requiring two PUDs, we just changed the PUD to include the second and Lyons Third, and this portion is Lyons Third that we're talking about today.
Okay, so it should read all of Lyons Third subdivision.
Correct.
Okay. So with that change, would there, well, just let me ask, first of all, if there's anyone from the public who would like to comment on this ordinance, 1485 is so, you can come to the podium now, state your name, we'll hear your comments. Okay, no one on 1485. Then I think the motion to approve second reading would replace the phrase or word "second" with the word "third." Would there be such a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve second reading, final passage of ordinance number 1485, with the correction of all of Lyons Third subdivision.
Okay. Is there a second?
I'll second.
We have the motion and the second. Any other discussion?
Just for clarification, there are two references in that item number one to Lyons Second. Are you saying that one gets changed but not the other?
We're including essentially both. And the first part of it talks about a portion of Lyons Second that's included, and then all of Lyons Third, which is the one coming to planning commission, the final plats coming to planning commission on Wednesday, and then it'll come to city commission next time around, but the PUD ran in front of that. So we just want to include basically both subdivisions, Lyons Second and Third for the PUD.
Okay, so we're just changing that second reference?
Correct. We just want to make sure that both of the subdivisions are included within the PUD plan.
Okay, I know I had the motion. Did I get the second? Any other discussion? Hearing done, we'll vote. Mrs. Stuckert?
Aye.
Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. It's 5:05. We have a timetable agenda item there, and this is a resolution regarding Sanford Health. And Mr. Coling or Mr. Kessel or either one of you prepared to introduce this item?
Mr. President, I'll take that one, and it's my pleasure to introduce to you John Olson, who is the general counsel for Sanford Health. The resolution in front of you is proposed by Sanford in order to construct a new healthcare facility in Dickinson, and I will turn the floor over to Mr. Olson to let him take you through the details of the project.
Thank you, Mr. Coling. President Johnson, city commissioners, I'm pleased to be here. My name is John Olson. I'm from Bismarck, and I served as counsel for Med Center One for a couple of years, and now we're at Sanford Health as a result of a merger. Sanford Health has got kind of, I think, about three projects on the table right now, and wants to issue bonds for financing those projects. One of them is a clinic here in Dickinson. The aggregate amount of those bonds, I think, is 150 million, and we're anticipating approximately 30 to 35 million of those bonds that go into the construction of this new clinic in Dickinson. I think Thief River is another project location, and Fargo is another one. And I'm aware that Thief River has passed on that project yesterday, I believe, and I think Fargo is anticipated to pass on it tomorrow. So why we're here is because the IRS requires that in a community where a project is going to be constructed using tax-exempt bonds, you have to assure your constituents that there will be substantial benefit to the community. And so that's the reason why you're here in this hearing, and we're asking for your approval for this project. There will no doubt be substantial benefit, I believe, to the city of Dickinson, and we're really pleased to be here and to embark on this. I think it will be a very significant project to the community, but also, I think, it'll really enhance the healthcare opportunities and benefits to our patients in Dickinson. And so this is the big project for Sanford-Bismarck right now, and so we're really excited about getting going. We're hoping that we can start construction next month and have the doors open within a couple of years. So I don't know if I need to say anything else. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
Any comments, questions for Mr. Olson? You have a guest with you?
I have a guest with me, and this is Jeremiah Lindgren. He's the manager of the Dickinson Clinic. He's been here for how many years? I don't know.
Just over a year.
Just over a year.
Okay.
We're going to keep him here, hopefully.
Well, welcome, Mr. Lindgren and Mr. Olson. Thank you. Are there any comments or questions for either of these gentlemen? All right, then, we could act on this, Mr. Olson, if Mr. Coling will give us a resolution number.
Mr. President, it's been Resolution 49-2012.
Okay. Is there a motion regarding 49-2012?
Move to approve.
We have the motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing done, we'll vote. Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mrs. Stuckert?
Aye.
Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries.
I want to thank you very much.
Thank you, and good luck with your project.
And we'll see you in Bismarck in a few months, some of you I know.
Okay. I think, Mr. Cottan, I think we can do Item B there.
Mr. President, commission, the next item's the final plat for Sundance Cove subdivision. It is located approximately a mile to the east of the intersection of 10th Avenue East and 21st Street. The property is approximately 40 acres, and it consists of 91 lots. The planning and zoning commission and city staff recommend approval, contingent upon the four conditions of approval that are noted within your packet materials. I'm available for any comments that you may have, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Cottan. Are there any comments or questions regarding this item? Mr. Coling, is this Resolution 50, then?
Yes, that's correct, Mr. President.
Would there be a motion regarding Resolution 50-2012?
Motion to approve.
I'll second.
We have the motion, the second. Any discussion? Hearing done, then we'll vote. Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mrs. Stuckert?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. I see our 5:15 timetable agenda item is here. We're just a little early on that, but I think we can go ahead and get started. This is a presentation by Mike Berg and Carl Olson from Apex. It's regarding the wastewater treatment plant and the financing of that facility. So, Mr. Berg.
Good evening, President Johnson, members of the city commission. Presentation will be brief, but we'll touch on an update of the water reclamation facility, talk about some of the capital improvement planning for the collection system, and impacts on our loan funding for the treatment facility. On the water reclamation facility, we've started construction. First concrete pour, I believe, was today. And we're, Phase 2 of that project will be a pump station to convey wastewater out to the treatment facility. Now, we had a two-year timeframe for construction of the treatment plant, and this pump station is about a one-year project. So we had a window to hold off on that pump station while we worked on some of the planning for the collection system. Now initially, the pump station was going to be where the existing pretreatment building is now, and would pump along the south side of the ponds out to the new wastewater treatment And over the last few months, we've been working on the collection system improvement plan. And this planning starts with land use and populations. We convert that into flows. We look at future flows from different areas and look at routes through the city to the Through this process, obviously, there's tremendous amount of growth program for the city of Dickinson over the next few years, and we've identified some major needs as the city grows. Now this figure here are the future growth areas for the city of Dickinson from the comprehensive plan. There are three main areas that I want to talk about this evening. Areas on the west part of town, northwest and south, really lend themselves to flows towards the south part of Dickinson and out to the treatment plant. Now, our initial plan was to have a new pump station serving the existing city of Dickinson and pumping out to the treatment plant. In addition to that pump station, for the capital improvement planning, one of the major improvements is a new pump station in the south part of Dickinson that would also pump out to the new treatment plant. As we've gone through some of this planning, we're looking for ways to match current improvements with future improvements and make things efficient. And in this application, it looks like there's a way we can combine these two pump stations to have one large pump station here in the southeast part of town that would take all the flow of current and future, most of the future flow, and pump that out to the treatment facility. One large pump station, lower capital cost, less maintenance time, less ONM cost, more electrically efficient, less power. This pump station needs to be online late spring of 2014. That's when the plant is going to be done, and so we would be looking to bid this pump station early 2013. The decision on what to do with that pump station doesn't need to be made now, but it has some implications for the loan applications for the treatment facility. Now, we'll touch on the state revolving loan fund. The state revolving loan is a fund by the North Dakota Department of Health, two and a half percentage interest over 20 years, and covers construction financing for a majority of the clean water wastewater infrastructure projects in North Dakota. There's no prepayment penalties, no penalties for not using the entire loan amount. It's important, though, to ask for a loan amount that will cover whatever needs may arise under this project. This sheet is the initial draft of the project loan, and this was a treatment plant of $30 million, a pump station of $4 million. We've got design engineering and project inspection, construction engineering of 2.2 million and 2.5 million, respectively. Utility connections for a total of $39,200,000 plus contingencies. Took us almost to $41 million. Now, with some of the future improvements for the capital improvement plan, if we combine those pump stations, really, we're looking at about a $7 million pump station. We've got design engineering and project inspection and construction, total for the whole project, 3.4 and 3.7 million. And utility connections, contingencies and undeveloped design details of 3.7 million would take us to a total of $48 million. If we subtract the current state oil impact funding, that leaves us with a loan request And that's the end of the presentation. The loan request is the item that hopefully would be acted on today. It doesn't mean that we have to use it all, but it reserves that money so it can be used as we go through the project. I'd be happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Berg. Are there any comments or questions for him?
Mr. President, Mr. Berg, so you're saying we need to go, if we decide from a $30 million loan to $40 million, pick up that larger pump station?
We're, we would be going from about a $39.2 million project with the treatment plant and the pump station to $48.4 million project.
And like you said, less the oil impact funding, so 30 to 40.
Yeah. So we'd be at $40.5 million.
But on the screen prior, you didn't put in the impact funding.
Right. This was the initial draft before we knew what funding was going to be allocated to the project.
Okay. So then, the bottom line on this loan request, if you took out the impact, is really closer to 30, 32?
Yeah. If we took out 7.9 million, we'd be at 33 million.
That's right.
So you're asking for our plan to increase $10 million tonight, going to the larger pump station?
Well, what it is, is when being involved in some of this capital improvement planning in association with the comp plan, certain collection system costs were identified, you know, and those will have to be done over here. Now, it seems like with the pump station that was already planned, by taking money out of this and doing it as part of this plan, we'd save money for the city overall. So, you know, those costs would have to be spent to increase your collection system size to handle this future growth. It just makes sense to streamline that into one station. So whether that will make sense when all of the comp plan figures are concluded, you know, that's still to be determined. But the loan application for this wastewater treatment plant needs to go in, and they, it's very difficult to get more money later. So you want to get as much as you'd possibly need to start with on this loan application. So whether that decides to be done or not, that's too to be determined. You don't have to act on whether you want to do that tonight. You just need to have a placeholder in this loan application for the state at this point. And if you decide to take a $10 million loan, that's fine, you know, but it's hard to go back and get. back and get $49 million if you only put in $40 million tonight, today. You see what I'm saying? You're not committing to--
But to be most reflective of the true cost, this slide would actually say $33 million. If both slides were going to be comparative, this one would say $33 million when you subtract out what's already been allocated, and the next slide would be $40,500,000. So, a difference of $7.5 million.
And in addition to these costs, there are several tens of millions of dollars in collection system improvements that will need to be done in the next one to 10 years. Now, the part of that is coming into this project.
Yeah. Let's be clear here. First of all, the wastewater treatment project has not -- the costs have not changed. What's changed is we're getting close to the end of the comprehensive city plan, and the engineers can see that there's going to be a fair amount of capital costs with that planned. And so, they're focusing in on the wastewater collection system throughout the city. And, you know, what they said was, it looks, based upon what they know today, it looks like we're going to need to loop a line around the west end of town. If we loop a line around the west end of town, it also requires a pump station, fairly sizable, of the same order as this one, maybe $4 million. Well, so, that raises a question. If you're going to have two $4 million pump stations, and they're essentially going to be a few blocks apart, would it make sense to use one pump station and go with a much larger capacity station? And so, if that seems to make sense to us, they're suggesting we apply for the construction financing for that right now. You can wait and leave that out and just deal with it at the comprehensive time, but I think there's a fairly high degree of confidence between the city engineer and our consulting engineers that the likely outcome is we would recommend one pump station as opposed to two. Is that correct, Mr. Sarn?
Yeah, that's exactly correct. You know, and from an operations standpoint, it's certainly always better to minimize the number of stations you have. And I think at this point, we're seeing that that need is there. We're not making the decision that we're going that direction, but we'd like to get the placeholder in with the state revolving loan fund, which allows us to pay for it through this process if we desire to go that direction as we start completing the comprehensive plan elements. Because I do believe we're going to need the two if we don't combine them together.
And we have an October 1 deadline on the SRF fund?
Yes. Yes.
So, you know, I view this more as construction financing right now. It can be our permanent financing, but I would sure hope that we're going to have a lot more than $7.9 million in oil impact funds to apply against this project. But again, you know, you have to go every, you know, you have to, it's in the state of North Dakota, since our state operates on a biennium, and they can change the appropriations and funding and formulas every two years. You can't really forecast how much more money that they will make available to the City of Dickinson. But we're definitely going to need more than $7.9 million. And, you know, during budget time, we talked about adding an additional management person to the city to allow Mr. Kessel more time to work outside the city trying to procure funds. It all kind of ties together, but--
Can you go back to the previous screen one more time? So, we had factored in a pump station, but what we're realizing is that we'd either need two pump stations or one super pump station is the big difference between the two.
Correct.
Is there a redundancy issue or a comfort level issue having one versus two, in case one would go down? Is there an upside-downside to having one super pump rather than two pumps that you--
They would be probably no difference as far as redundancy or reliability. They would both be serving separate entities, so a failure in any one of them would cause overflows or collection system backups.
Which is why we put redundancy within each station, you know?
Right.
It's designed in, extra pump, extra spare parts, that kind of thing.
Mr. President?
Mr. Jackson?
It's likely that some of the things we may have to do to our collection system the next few years would be eligible for SRF funding. True?
Correct.
Is there flexibility enough that if we do the larger amount now and don't need the full amount, we can roll it to some of these other projects in the future?
Normally, each project is a separate application.
You'd have to reapply.
There's no limit as far as, that I'm aware of, with the state as far as the amount of projects. The loan application is fairly straightforward, but there's, you know, there's quite a bit of background data we put along with it.
We would have to reapply, and the reason we can add in this one is our facility plan covered an influent pump station with a location to be determined. So, that's how we can bring this in, because in order to get on this loan program, you have to do a series of technical submittals, you know, facility plan, those have to be approved. The reason we can do that is we did have an influent pump station, which would cover either or.
Mr. President, you know, this makes sense to me to do this, the larger amount. But I think in the near future, we have other things to talk about, because we're now entering that time in the next year or two, where we're going to be tackling some of these much more major extensions of infrastructure. And we do have to talk about whether or not developers should be involved in some of this, or new areas of town. And it sounds like we can do that later. We can take this action tonight and do that later. But the window's getting a little bit smaller for us to face some of those decisions, have some of those discussions.
One of the topics of conversation was, what happens if you have a main failure at the one pump station versus two, where you could route?
Well, the two wouldn't be interconnected. So, a failure at one, you know, wouldn't necessarily allow you to use the other one for the same purpose. They would be two separately dedicated to separate areas. So, you know, in that case, we would just have to program in redundant pumps, you know, spare parts, all the things we would normally do that would, if we did have a failure, we would have other equipment on site to use and not, you know, cause an issue.
So, no connection between the two?
No. There would, well, there would not be under that scenario of the two separate, I guess.
Yeah. We haven't quite gotten down to that level of detail with that, both scenarios, but normally, they wouldn't.
How would we handle a weak failure at one main pump?
The, you know, for new pump stations, there's 100% redundancy in every piece of equipment, also emergency power. So, there aren't many failures that happen. Now, what some cities will do on a new pump station would be incorporate some piping to allow bypassing with an engine-driven pump. So, that may be the ultimate backup. If there is a major failure, that would be an option. And an engine-driven pump that can be used in a lot of different locations could be used as a backup for several.
And also, if you remember, the reason to keep the existing ponds was for bypass of that lift station. We'd still have that in place, so there is an option still to go to the ponds. Certainly, there's design details to bring it from the southern part we haven't explored yet. We're in the early stages still of that, but--
Thank you.
Again, this, if we approve the application, and if the Department of Health decides to accept the application and fund it, we can use it just as construction funding, meaning we can still continue to search for permanent financing. And we don't know yet what the long-term amount is that we will need to finance, but by alternatives, I mean, we can still consider like a revenue bond. And it's possible that, at the time we do that, the interest rates on revenue bonds might be under, lower than the 2.5%. 2.5% is a pretty good rate. But it's possible that by bonding, we could get a lower rate, too. So, and I'm sure Mr. Kessel and Mrs. Johnson will be doing some research on what the market's like. But I would hope that we would have to permanently finance much less than $40.5 million. You know, this is, most of this is due to oil impact, and we would sure make a case to the legislative body and the government officials in charge of allocating impact oil money that a good portion of this is oil impact. So, Mr. Kohling, as part of our materials, there is a resolution here, and I assume that's the action we have to take tonight to allow Mr. Kessel and Mrs. Johnson, to allow them to go ahead and complete this application and submit it.
That's correct, Mr. President. In your packet, there's a draft resolution, and there would be Resolution 51-2012, and it authorizes the city to make the SRF loan application. It doesn't commit the city to a specific dollar amount, but it allows yourself and Mr. Kessel to apply for the loan within the timelines that the state would require.
It would be our intention to apply for the $40.5 million that Mr. Berg and Mrs. Olson showed on, I think it was, you know, that slide right there. Does anybody object to that?
No. No. This application will be answered when? When will we get an offer granting us the SRF loan? If they do?
The application goes to the industrial commission, which I believe meets about the middle of the month, if I'm correct. So, mid-October, I believe. They would act on that, and you could start requesting reimbursements on everything you've paid towards this project to date. And so, it would happen right after that. And then--
Is this simply a matter of if the $40.5 is granted, and we just don't use that much? That's all there is to it?
Yep. Yep. So, if after this project is done, fast forward two years, you end up using $13 million of it, that's what your 20-year payments are based on. So, whatever you ask for reimbursement in the end of this construction period, that's the loan. Does that make sense?
So, you know, we would use oil impact monies first. There is some existing monies in our water fund that we'd probably apply first here. And then, again, we'd be working to increase the amount of oil impact money allocated from the state to the city here.
I think the important thing to realize, too, is that the facility has not changed in scope, has not changed in price. It still came in as the bid was announced and within dollars of the bid. One of the few bids that we've had actually come in at the cost projected. These are additions that we would need, even if we had went with a lagoon system. We are still having construction happening in different areas of our town. We still need a way to get that waste to whatever facility we were doing. So, even though it looks like $33 million to $40 million, the change is ancillary items that go with whatever format we selected. Is that what I'm getting?
Yes, correct. This is just, as you said, getting the waste to the facility now. And as the comp plans develop, those locations where growth is happening, that's kind of put some pieces of the puzzle together.
Lynn, Mr. Sarn, do you have a sense of when that comp plan might at least be complete in, maybe not a final draft, but pretty close to the final draft, when we might see that?
One to two months. I think we're currently on a lot of these type items. We're trying to schedule meetings, working with Katamis Lee and Jackson, looking at the water model and some of the infrastructure needs there. We've already met with them on some of the transportation side. Apex has been working, and we'll be meeting with them to go through their side as well, too. So, I think over the next month or so, we'll start getting that stuff together for your review.
And as Mr. Berg said and Mr. Jackson said, I mean, I think we're all expecting that that plan's going to show some pretty significant infrastructure costs, anywhere's from, we need to do it immediately, to, you know, some of these projects might be several years out.
Yeah, that's the type of information we're working on right now. What needs to be done in the next one to three, five years? What's 10 years? What's within the next 20 type of a schedule?
Okay. Anything else here? So, the resolution in your packet is Resolution 51-2012, and as Mr. Kohling said, it authorizes the city to go ahead and submit the application. It would be our intent to apply for $40.5 million. Would there be a motion?
How would we approve the resolution?
Second.
We have the motion and the second. Further discussion? Hearing done, we'll vote. Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Mrs. Stuckert?
Aye.
Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. So, the motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Berg and Mrs. Olson. Okay, that brings us down to Item 6C. And actually, Mr. Catan, I had a short discussion the other day about hotel construction. I've had some conversations with Mr. Jackson about hotel construction. And in my discussions with Mr. Catan, I indicated that I had some concerns that maybe we might overbuild the number of motel rooms that we need in the City of Dickinson. He also expressed some concern. We said, well, maybe we ought to just put this down as a discussion item. And I'll let you take it from there, Mr. Catan, but I think, in fact, we're just looking for an open discussion here by the commission, but we'll let you go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would concur with that. Over the last several months, it has started to become a concern of mine with the proliferation or the request for hotel construction within the city. When you factor in with KLJ's projections for a population of roughly between 41,000 and 45,000, a community of ours, how many hotels are too many? And that discussion kind of came about, discussed that in-house with staff members, and they kind of felt the same as well. I've spoken to some planning commissioners, and they voiced their concerns with that issue. So, I had planner Steve Josephson contact five communities that were going to be-- So I had Planner Steve Josephson contact five communities that were going to be comparable in size to where we're projecting our population to be in 10 years, roughly between 41,000 and 45,000. That would be located next to an interstate road. So roughly the same comparison to Dickinson, the same character. And with that, provided some data for you to look at. If you look at the sheet in front of you, the Hotel and Motel Research dated August 2012, you'll notice the five communities. The highest community that I had on there is the first one, Columbus, Indiana. And that is a, and this is a booming community, one of the fastest-growing in Indiana. And they had a total hotel rooms of 1,600 in a total number of hotels at 18. The other ones were less, if you want to refer to the page. Down towards the bottom of it, I have additional data to support some of my findings. I've got data from, I think it's Terry Thiel from the Dickinson Convention and Visitors' Bureau. And on the second page, some referenced hotels dating back to 1997 all the way up to 2013. And their total with new and hotels that are under construction were at roughly 1,911 rooms. If you add that to some of the discussions I've had with hotel developers over the last several months, and these are not just general discussions, these are ones in which they come in with decent site plans. So they've had some forethought and some planning involved with it. Adding up two hotels, the Marriott Fairfield and Town Place Suites, which is located at 29th and Highway 22. Another hotel located on east of Highway 22, I'm going to keep that at confidential. They wanted me to do that during their negotiations. The Tewton subdivision, I was recently approved, 75 units. And then also one that we had approved a couple of months back for a rezone across from Dakota Diner, next to Catamis and Lee Jackson's building. That is, I believe, at 50. If you added up those totals, you're looking at roughly 2,402 rooms, which is a significant increase compared to the highest one of the five communities that we inquired about. Wish I had the other sheet with me, I think I do. Just to add some additional data, if I can find the sheet, contacted Minot and Fargo. I don't have that. But, that being said, they were higher, but the totals that we're looking at at 2,400 was getting close to, getting close to Bismarck's total, which Bismarck is significantly larger than we are. I think, I think Minot's was at 2,100 or at 1,800, something like that. And Fargo was well above us, but-
I've got the numbers here, Mr. Kattan. Minot has 2,143 existing, have either 813 under construction or planned. That would give them close to 3,000 rooms. Minot is a community of currently about 41,000 people. Bismarck Mandan, which is about 81,000 people, has around 2,500 rooms existing. They have over 500 planned. They would get up to about 3,000 rooms then if they built everything. Dickinson, five years ago, had 700 rooms, you know. And so whether you use 2,100 or 2,400, I mean, I think you can say with, you know, today we're at nearly 1,300 rooms. We've got, I think, some that are already committed to go here. But if everybody builds, we're going to have three times what we had in 1997.
Mr. President, do you have numbers on Williston?
I do. Williston has 1,288 existing, Plan 925. That would bring them up to 2,200. I tried to look at this as like rooms per 1,000 people, you know. I don't know if population is the best way to look at it. But Fargo looked to me like they have about 19 rooms per 1,000 people. If we just built to 1,900 rooms, we would have 83 rooms per 1,000 people. Williston would have 96, Minot 72, Bismarck Mandan about 37. Rapid City, which is very much a tourist destination area, has 63 rooms for every 1,000 people. We'd be up, right up there on the high end. So really, the question is, does the city have a responsibility to try, in a sense, protect the developers from themselves? Or it's a free and open market? We make the information available. If they still want to build it, they go ahead. I think that's basically the dilemma. What's the proper role for the city here?
I would agree with that, Mr. President. I think the discussion would be if there is direction to have staff look at, look at an ordinance potentially, and I'm not talking about, thank you, I'm not talking about, you know, prohibit in any way, shape, or form, just providing a mechanism, as I noted in my summary, that, you know, go from a permitted use within our commercial districts to a discretionary permit, which is a permit in which you could attach conditions to, or you could require additional criteria before you make a decision. And we do that for many land uses. And maybe it's appropriate with the events that we have in front of us, the next five to 10 years of massive construction and the bus cycle that will inevitably happen, that we should require them to provide us with a market study or some kind of additional information to support their case that that hotel will be able to support itself in a population of 41,000 to 45,000 when we have the influx of temporary workers leave. And I think that's the concern. I think when you look at the numbers, you see that we'll be well over what a city should be for, based upon our character. And I guess the question is, is there any, is there any direction to staff to look into that?
Can you explain some of the other instances where we use this permitting techniques in the other businesses or developments that we employ this? Your suggestion?
Well, we have that, you know, we use that. First one comes to hand would be our crew camp ordinance. We require them to, you know, we don't require a market study, but we require them to go through a pretty strict criteria in order for them to get approval for that. You know, other land uses that would come to play for that would be communication tower ordinance. You know, ours is pretty, ours is pretty general, but it's broad in our interpretation. So whenever somebody comes in and wants to propose a new tower, instead of them just saying, yeah, I'd like to put it there, I'll ask them for background information to ensure that that tower, so we don't have the proliferation of towers, ensure that tower is necessary and that they have tried to co-locate with existing towers around the area in order for us not to have a lot of vertical real estate, per se. Those are the two that jump out at me. I know there's other instances that we do have, you know, other criterias for other land uses for that. I understand that there was a community, and I looked at it today, Irving, Irving, Texas has a, has some additional criteria when it comes to hotels. They had some concerns, and they required a market study as part of their approval process for that. And I would imagine probably some other resort communities or jurisdictions similar to us that may have went through that boom-bust cycle realized towards the latter end that maybe we should look at that. So I haven't had a lot of time to do a lot of research, Commissioner Altman's, but I could come back with, you know, if you, if the commission desires with some information on criteria or potentially other jurisdictions on how they have addressed that. I think for us, I think we've all come to an awareness that we have a demand that's going to far exceed what we can build or should build because we will have a bus cycle. And how do we address that? And I think the market is addressing it in many ways with hotels. It's been, it's been said to me in many occasions and meetings that, you know, for these hotels at the vacancy, at the occupancy rates, the demand, the amount of cost that they can get per room, that they could recoup their capital within a couple of years. So there is a huge temptation, I think, on the hotel industry to potentially overbuild because they know within a couple of years, three to four, five years, they can get back all their capital. And from there, it's a very profitable endeavor. So as a community, should we look at that? That's left up to you as a commission to direct staff.
Mr. President, I think to answer the question you pose, we have to ask, what's the downside? What is the downside? If we do overbuild, and then is it our role as city government to try to prevent that downside? I think that's what we have to ask. And the first thing comes to my mind is if we do have motels in a few years here that are 50% occupied, is there a downside to that? What does that do to our community? What will they look like? What might they look like?
Well, we have, you know, we've gone through the cycle before.
Exactly.
After the oil downturn of the early 80s, early and mid 80s, our motels operated at low room rates, low occupancy. And, you know, the property that was our convention property was not reinvested in, and eventually physically, it went down, went downhill, and it made it more and more difficult to attract and retain conventions here.
We have at least one motel that I can think of that was built in the 70s and 80s that is now a nursing home, elderly care facility. There may be more that I'm not thinking of. If we have a downturn, when things flatten out, there may be some of these facilities that are being built that will be maybe even condo-ed out. Maybe there'll be an apartment building, maybe they'll have other uses. I don't know. But I'm not sure how much we should count on that, either. There have been a number of things that we've done in the last couple of years as a community with our zoning regulations, with our permitting, with other things, that at times really make me uncomfortable. You know, I worry that we're getting a little too heavy-handed at times. On the other hand, these are really unusual times that we're in. And I think that the lion's share of what we have done so far is warranted. I think we'll be glad we did them. I say that because I think, I think it's appropriate that we do look at this.
The, you know, one possible action by the city is just to make the information more readily available, express our concerns, and then the developers make their own decisions. I mean, you know, you can, you could do that. But I, I know I'm concerned that I think we could overbuild, and it'll, in the long term, it would, I think, have a negative impact on the community. Now, we're not going to decide anything tonight. There's just discussions. One of the future courses of action that we could do would be to invite, well, just anyone that would like to join into the discussion, but we could specifically invite some developers, some of the hotel motel owners, invite the CBB and hear their thoughts, too, if you think it's warranted to do something like that.
I'd like to do that. That'd be very good.
Mr. Kessel?
President Johnson and Commission, I can't help but think about another factor that hasn't been discussed yet tonight, and that's the availability of crew camps in our area. We have a, we have a rather strict ordinance in regards to crew camps, and we don't have any in the city or even in the county. And I can't help but think that the lack of crew camps immediately in our area may have an effect on the proliferation of hotels. I could be wrong. But certainly, there, I think you can draw some conclusions about the lack of crew camps may increase the amount of hotel properties that are being proposed in our area. So just throw that out for discussion.
I think that's probably true. At the same time, we've talked before that we've got over 3,000 apartment units at some phase of, some phase in the process, with maybe several hundred possibly breaking ground yet this fall, correct? And I expect that the construction of those apartments will affect this question, too.
Any other comments by city commissioners?
I think we do need some competition, though, because the room rates are extremely high right now considering around the area versus your big cities.
Well, and I think when we compare ourselves to Columbus, Indiana, Jackson, Michigan, one of the things that are missing in these communities is their close proximity to a national park that attracts 500,000 visitors a year. That is certainly not factored into some of the other communities that we're comparing ourselves to. And you look at the neighboring communities around the park and their ability to build and sustain hotels, it's certainly not as great as Dickinson's ability to do that as well, with us having a full-time convention and visitors bureau whose charge is to fill rooms. It's funny that just a couple of months ago, we were having the discussion of high room rates, high occupancy, and the need for either more hotels or crew camps. And so you can certainly see the writing on the wall that it's going to get overbuilt if something isn't done, either. I don't think anyone on this board is trying to say that we know the hotel industry and that we want to discourage business coming to our community. I think that we want to help the industry to make a good, informed, long-term decision, not based on just the couple, three years of easy money and hope it all works out. We want to know that it's a well-thought-out and a long-term plan moving forward.
I think if you made, you know, if you took any action based upon what was going on today, you might take the wrong action. Occupancy rates are still pretty high, and room rates are pretty high. But I think if you look down the road two or three years from now, I'd be very surprised if occupants, if we build what's being planned, if we'd run the same occupancy rates and actually have room rates that are that high also. But it would be interesting, like, to have Terry Thiel here. She, you know, this is what she does for a living, and have her make some comments. And again, those who are developing and those who have already developed. I just, you know, I think it's something we ought to try to get more information on. And at the end of the day, it might be that the city doesn't try to control the number of rooms, it just makes the information available and let the chips fall where the chips fall. When you look at the numbers, it, on a long-term basis, I, it's hard for me to see that we would be able to sustain 2,300, 2,400 rooms. Could be wrong, but, you know, unless we're going to get a lot larger than 40-some thousand people. If that's the case, Apex has to design us a much bigger wastewater treatment facility. But-
I think you're right. I think we want to be on the radar as far as letting these companies know what we're thinking and vice versa. I think they need to come and validate to us why they think that they could sustain more motel rooms in this town. I mean, it would be interesting.
You know, one of the things that we have going for us is our comprehensive plan and the fact that a hotel can't just crop up in any nook, cranny, or corner of the community. One of the reasons that I feel that Evergreen, you know, didn't make it is if you look back at when Evergreen was built as a hotel, it really was off the beaten path- at when Evergreen was built as a hotel, it really was off the beaten path and not in close proximity to the other hotels that were in our corridor. Looking forward, you know, you can certainly see where we would have a need for new hotels in our new commercial development that's going to be out at Exit Fifty-Nine. That makes a, a logical place. It gets dicey the further off the grid the hotels are, and, and that's why I have some comfort in our comprehensive plan, that, that we do have in our minds a, a place for everything, and, and everything in its place. And so, we do have some control moving forward that way. That being said, I think it's going to be very important that, that everybody's able to make a good, informed decision, not only on the near term, but, but long-term sustainability too.
If, if the property, if the land is zoned properly, and the developer meets the building codes, they can go build a motel, right? I mean, we can't stop them.
That is correct. I mean, it's a permitted use, it's not a discretionary permit that requires additional approvals.
Well, I mean, if, if they meet the requirements, I mean, it, they can build it. And, you know, I don't know if that should change or not. I mean, it's, again, it's a free-market system that we have, but-
I think for me, Mayor, the, the concern that I had is during the presentation that we've had, and I've had others tell me, you need to have, for a viable community, you need to have a, an occupancy rate of about sixty to sixty-five percent, or something like that, I think, per night, for it to, to be effective and to be, you know, to be a profitable endeavor. You know, the number of potential hotels, plus who knows how many more over the next several months, if they're brought forth, you know, that's, that's my concern. It's not today, it's not five years or even ten years, it's the fifteen years down the road. And when a lot of these people have went away, you know, will we have that? Will each of the hotels be able to have that sixty percent occupancy per night, or average somewhere in that vicinity, in order for them to be productive, to maintain it, and to flourish, you know, within the economy, instead of several flourishing and, and others do not? But, you know, I just wanted to bring the issue up. We do have some opportunities in our town. We are close to Theodore Roosevelt, which helps out. We do have a need for student housing, for DSU. So, there is an opportunity in which some of these hotels could convert into a second phase for student housing. And we also have a need for seniors as well, that maybe some of them could convert to senior housing. So, there, there are some opportunities for second, for, for providing a second generation for that, but, you know, I don't see that if we moved it from a permitted to a discretionary permit, that we are saying to the industry that we are, you know, no longer favorable towards it. We're just, we're just saying, are you aware of this, and provide us with your natural business plan? Every one of these businesses would come through with a long-term, a short and a long-term business plan. Okay, provide us with that information so that we know it's a, it's not a speculative venture. But, that being said, I think it would be a good idea to have a meeting, if that's a direction, to, to hear from the developers and from the hotel people, and, and see if they agree, or, and see if there is a need for that.
There, there's another factor here, too. I, I would believe that most of these motels being developed are not one-hundred percent equity financing, that there's a fair amount of, of debt financing, which means they have to get the approval of a loan officer, probably a loan committee at whatever financial institution they're dealing with. So, their business plan is getting scrutinized there, so there is a sense of some regulation taking place. If, if the financial community still feels that they're viable and is willing to loan money to, you know, finance the, the construction and operations, you know, that's, that's another factor to consider. I don't think the city needs to really get into the process of evaluating their business plan. But I think maybe the city does have a role in terms of saying, if you want to build it, that's fine, but in our opinion, we think we're, you know, we're on the verge of building too many.
And your concern, it doesn't end at the twenty-four hundred. It's not like requests and demands are going to stop at the twenty-four hundred at this point. It's daily, weekly, monthly, that you get new requests, or new entities looking at coming in and, and building a hotel. It's not like it ends here.
That's correct. I, you know, what I have been doing with the last two hotels, that I had a meeting last week and the rest, and I told them that this general number, I didn't have it all broken down, but I said we could have potentially twenty-five hundred. They were kind of shocked by that number. That being said, they were going to take it back and go see, you know, from, if they're going to move forward with their plans. It sounded like they had factored that in, that they felt that that was okay with the market. But, you know, I think that it's wise, and I try to do that also with apartments as well. Let them know the numbers that are coming on, and also try to encourage them to, you know, build higher-quality ones, because eventually, even in the apartment side, you're going to have to compete for those renters. So, providing the two-car garages, the nicer amenities will, will allow you to command that higher rent rates, instead of having to compete with ones that don't have those amenities. So, those are issues that we, as staff, we try to convey to them as well.
Sure.
I still think that if our rates were cheaper, we'd have more people staying here too. Right now, we don't, I mean, just an example for our North Dakota, South Dakota Realtor Conference, the rooms are like a hundred twenty dollars a night at the convention center. We could have easily had four to five hundred people come if the rates hadn't been so high, because they bulked at the rate. So, I think if we had more rooms available, and people wouldn't-
Say one-twenty?
One-twenty.
And, and that's the tough part of it, because it's the same for an apartment, or home, or whatever-
Exactly.
Prices are so high right now. We need more of all sectors of housing today, but to try to get the crystal ball out and make sure we're not going too far is the tough part. CVB compile occupancy rates every month?
Every week, actually, we get a new report from them.
Is that something, I'd be interested in seeing that, maybe on a monthly basis, if we could just have that in our package, just to, just kind of get a sense of where occupancy rates are, are going. It would be one more bit of information that would help us, I think.
Sure.
Well, here's a suggestion. We could send out, maybe use the CVB to help compile a list of folks to invite to, say, a meeting, not two weeks from now, but four weeks from now, and just come in and, and tell us their thoughts. And I mean, their thoughts might be city but out, you, you know, it's a free market, just let us do this, or whatever. But I mean, it, I'd be interested in, in hearing from the members of the CVB and the industry, what they're thinking. Maybe they know a whole bunch more about the future than we do. And maybe the future is pretty bright.
Yeah, I would too.
Should we do that?
Yeah.
That's, um, any other comments on this?
You, you really have two sides of the issue. You have current motel owners, and you have perspective.
Yeah, yep, developers, and, yep. We should hear from them all. Well, I think that covers our agenda items. Were there, is there anything from city commissioners that you wanted to discuss? How about from the public? Anybody from the public that would like to address the commission? If so, you can come to the podium, state your name, and we'll hear your comments. No one from the public? Chair to entertain a motion, then to adjourn.
So moved.